City of Madeira Beach Board of Commissioners Special Meeting. Today is December 22nd and the time is 6:00 PM. Commissioner Lister, will you please lead us in this evening's invocation?
I will, Mr. Mayor. Most gracious, Father, we thank you so much for a wonderful place to live and worship. We ask that you continue to bless the city. We ask you to keep giving this council wisdom and guidance as they make decisions that affect the citizens of Madeira Beach. We also lift up Vice Mayor Poe and her family in their time of crisis. Always in your name and great.
Amen. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Lister?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Shantz?
Here.
Mayor Palladino?
Here.
Vice Mayor Poe?
All right, next, at this time I'll entertain a motion for approval of the provided minutes.
I shall move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any additions or corrections? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
All right, before I entertain a motion for approval of the agenda, Mr. City Manager, do you want the floor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Included in item number one, you can also include a motion to excuse Vice Mayor Elaine Poe from the previous workshop meeting that we held at 5:30. You cannot excuse her from this meeting, that will be on the next agenda. And then, for the benefit of the viewing public and the audience, under new business, item number one, which is affectionately known as the Holton Property or the LeVerox Property, due to the drama that we had yesterday and the building literally going out of power for quite some time, we were not able to hold the Plan Commission meeting that was canceled and postponed to, I believe, January 11th. That means, per your code, without a recommendation from them, you cannot take this issue up tonight, and so I will be asking for either a motion now or when it comes up, that that be referred to your meeting in January, which I believe, Amy, if you can shake your head for me, is January 12th.
All right, thank you, Mr. City Manager, and at this time I will entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve this agenda with the addition of the, to excuse Vice Mayor Poe for the workshop and also to put the Ordinance 2015-18 on the meeting in January 12, 2015.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any comments from the Commission? All righty, would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe? Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
All right, I guess the first item, devote to excuse Commissioner Pat Shantz's absence on December 9, 2015, BOC Special Workshop. At this time I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I second.
Is there any discussion?
[laughing].
Okay, we're glad you're good, Commissioner and Madam Mayor. Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Poe? Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
All righty, and next, item number two, with C. Marshall, where is C. Marshall? Deputy Craig, would you please bring Ms. Marshall to the podium?
[inaudible]
And, Mr. City Manager, would you please join me at the podium?
I will be happy to, as long as the City Clerk would join us as well as she, City Clerk and C work very closely together, and I think it's very appropriate that she join us down there.
You gotta go to the podium, C, sorry.
Surprise!
Surprise. Well, Ms. Marshall, on behalf of the City of Madeira Beach, the Mayor and the Commissioners, and I'm gonna really little think your accomplishments here recently, I guess you have just received your Master's Degree in Public Administration from the University of South Florida, and previously your Bachelor's Degree at the University of Florida. Congratulations, you're a young lady, and you're one of the bright stars, we have many bright stars in the employees here at the City of Madeira Beach, but Ms. Marshall is definitely working her way in there. And also, something else I'd like to say about C., last week, City of Madeira Beach was on, actually being the first city outside county courthouse to hold a Torres Developmental Council. At that meeting, Chair County Commissioner John Barone, we had Mayor Kreisman here, Mayor Cardikis of Clearwater, Mayor Johnson of Indian Rock Beach. You see, you did an outstanding job working with county staff, so that's because meetings have to be televised, and thank you very much, and congratulations, and there you go, Merry Christmas, C. [applause] The floor is yours, if you'd like to say anything.
Um, just thanks, everyone, for supporting me, I'm really shocked right now.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Good, C. I love pulling off a good surprise, that was awesome. That the, actually, that was, I don't think we can do that on this, Mr. City Attorney did, I think the question was from Commissioner Lister, at this time, can we vote to excuse Commissioner Poe, but I believe we need to just put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Not from this meeting, but did we get from the workshop?
From the workshop, yes.
That was included, I believe, in the motion to excuse Commissioner Shantz.
So that would be item number three, that's up right now, and I will entertain a motion for that.
So, Mr. Mayor, I shall move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, to excuse Vice Mayor Poe from the workshop meeting. Is there any discussion from the Commission? Would City Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
All right, next, dais log review.
Only if there's any questions, Mr. Mayor.
No, I don't think there's any questions.
I don't even know if there's any.
Any questions from the Commissioners? Okay, great, moving on. Next, public comment, would anybody like to speak this evening? All right, at this time I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I shall move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. City Manager, is there any comments from staff?
Staff recommendation is for approval, any questions can be asked of the Finance Director, you see one large number there for 1.6 million, that's a fuel contract, that's a state bid that we participate in, that's an annual expenditure that we always do.
Okay, is there any further comment? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
All right, next, unfinished business, contracts and agreements, authorization to execute union contract with Pinellas County Professional Firefighters, IAAF Local 4966. At this time I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we authorize to execute upon a union contract with Pinellas County Professional Firefighters, IAFF Local 4966, Mr. Mayor.
I second, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion and a second, Mr. City Manager, is there any comments from staff?
No, Mr. Mayor, if you remember, you addressed a revolving door slash salary issue with the union prior to the expiration of their contract, so the salaries were already addressed, which is usually about 99% of the negotiating that you do on a union contract. There is some financial implication, I guess, with this contract amounting to less than $10,000 a year, including providing for long-term disability for our firefighters, which we didn't provide for before, which, when you think about it, they're probably the most at-risk employee that we have, so I had no problem agreeing with that, that's outlined in your packet tonight. But, all in all, I have to kudos to the Chief and to the Union themselves, they made it a very simple first contract negotiation for both Mr. Tenali and I, and your City Manager's recommendation is for approval.
All right, thank you very much. Chief O'Neil, is there any comment from the firefighters or from Fire Station 25?
No.
Thank you. And I'd like to say what a wonderful job, Chief, you and your men, and I see we have one of our youngest lieutenants here this evening, and thank you very much to your dedication to the City of Madeira Beach. Is there any further comment? Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
[laughing]
Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on, the next line should read, and I apologize, "Award of RFQ with Strong Eight," the approval in contract, obviously, or approval, I'm sorry, the approval in the agreement, obviously, or the approval of the agreement is yet to come. So, approval of RFQ, skip to, with Strong Eight.
Okay, see if I can remember that one with a head cold. All right, this time I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the RFQ with Strong Eight.
Got it.
Right, with gym training. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any comments from staff?
Recommendations for approval, the nitty-gritty will be in the contract that I cooperate with the City Attorney on in drafting, and he assures me that it'll be at the next meeting, so that Strong Eight can go ahead and plan a grand opening and get going on what they're doing.
All right, is there any further comments? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe? Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
All right, next, authorization to execute Swift Mud Agreement 16CF000151 for American Legion Drive Stormwater BMPs.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a paper or a housekeeping issue for what we've already approved, getting that 50% funding from Swift Mud for our road projects. Vince, I don't know if, I'm sorry, Mr. Tenali, if there's any more detail to that that we want to offer at this time, or?
The only thing I would say is that each of the next two items for Swift Mud Agreements represent revenue that is not currently budgeted, not currently planned for in the budget, so it's a direct positive impact to fund balance, so we're in a better position than we budgeted ourselves to be in.
Fantastic.
Good, good.
So, at this time I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we authorize to execute Swift Mud Agreement 16CF0000151 for the American Legion Drive Stormwater BMPs.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion from the Commission? Is there any further discussion? Would City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Poe? Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
All right, next, authorization to execute Swift Mud Agreement 16CF0000152 for Rex Place Stormwater BMPs. At this time I'll entertain a motion.
I shall move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any comments from staff on this?
Same as the last one, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any further comments? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
All right, next, new business, approval of staffing changes to recreational department. Mr. City Manager, you want to give us, I'm sorry?
We need that motion to postpone Ordinance 2015-18 to the next meeting.
So that wasn't made when we went ahead and did the?
No, that was just to, approve the agenda.
Okay, to put it on the agenda.
All right.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor. I move that we postpone Ordinance 2015-18 to the next meeting, January 12, 2016.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion from, excuse me, Mr. City Manager, is there any comments from staff on that?
No, sir, that's, we're ready to go on that one.
Okay.
The meeting is January the 11th.
No, I think the Plan Commission is the 11th, and the BOC is the 12th.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, is there any further discussion? Would City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Poe? Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Next, approval of staffing changes to recreational department. Mr. City Manager, do you have any comments on this before I entertain a motion?
The only comment that I would like to make, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Andrews to come to the podium to have him walk you through it, is, A, I'm supportive of it and I recommend approval, secondly, as you all well know, I mean, what we created out there, we knew was going to evolve and change, and so I believe Mr. Andrews is doing the best he can to finally get this into some sort of concrete formula, if you will, of staffing, but as things change and as we kind of, it's a difficult department to staff because of the level of pay that we offer and what we're doing out there, and so I'm very supportive of what Mr. Andrews is doing, and I think this change puts us in a better position than we were, and this may not be the last change that you see, and don't be afraid of that, you know, staffing change, it needs to evolve as our needs change, and so with that, I'll give the floor to Mr. Andrews as he can walk you through it.
Andrews?
No, can't hear you.
See, can you see if the podium mic is on, please?
Oh, there we go, okay. Sorry, I can't record that. Yeah, Shane actually hit it, the City Manager actually hit it really exactly on the head. You know, when you look at the new recreation center, I am the longest-tenured employee there, and I've been here a whole whopping 18 months at the present time, so what we're doing, we're just kind of moving a few things around, and the City Manager is probably correct, this may not be the last change that we make, but it's all really kind of designed about the fact that we are, we've increased the amount of, this is all related to childcare right now, everything that we're talking about here, it's all related to childcare, it's our number-one revenue item in the city, but it's obviously the most important thing that we are, I guess, scrutinized by the Pinellas County Licensing Board about, so we want to make sure we have the right people in place. I don't think money-wise, there's a whole big chance we're eliminating a position, creating a position, kind of moving some stuff around, and we may, I may come to you again at some point, and we may have to tweak it again at some point, but the truth is, at the end of the day, we're gonna keep as close as we can to the budget, but we just want to make sure the kids are safe, they're having a good time, and their parents are bringing them back time and time again, I mean, our enrollment's growing, everything about our programs is growing, you know, a little stip end I should probably tell you, too, after long and arduous, let's say, disagreements with our friends at the Little League, they came to us last night with a proposal to become the Madeira Beach Babe Ruth Association, they're disbanding Little League and becoming a program of ours, which is something that 18 months ago, I would tell you, I would never have seen coming based on some of the discussions that we had, so it's all really coming together, these are just little tweaks that we're making in order to make it work.
Mr. Mayor, just to add to that, and Doug, you don't have to spit out the statistics, but I mean, when he says a growth in numbers, I mean, we're talking significant percentage increases in after-school programs and summer camps and that type of thing, and I'd like to attribute a lot of it to Doug and his staff because they do work their tails off and they offer programs that we haven't offered before, but we have to go back to, if you build it, they will come. We have one of the most beautiful sites around, and people want to send their kids here, so we're dealing with growing pains, frankly, and as the numbers go up, the revenues go up, but we also have to staff it, and so that's what you're dealing with tonight.
And Doug, I'd like to say, you know, you're doing outstanding job, you know that we hosted the TDC meeting here, Kevin Smith was here, I had three other mayors of three other municipalities here, and to be able to brag, I mean, when you sit there two weeks or three weeks coming out of doing your budget, you come in here and say you need an amendment to the budget because you've already exceeded what you've already thought you were gonna bring in revenues, and for three other mayors, I mean, it's impressive, I mean, it's very impressive. Also, once again, the president of the world, the European Softball League was here with Kevin Smith, once again, he was very impressed with our fields, and he's pretty much saying it's a done deal, so I guess that's gonna be on your end to work it out for the City of Madeira Beach. Besides us being nationwide known for what we're doing here, now we're gonna be worldwide, so outstanding job, Mr. Andrews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, thank you.
I'd just like to say that, you know, when we built it, we had every program that we had in place back again, and you have created new programs from the very beginning, from 18 months ago, to date, to add revenue to the City of Madeira Beach, and that's one of the reasons that you're having to add staff, and I really, really appreciate that, because you could stop, you could stop adding staff if you stopped adding things, but you're not stopping adding things, and that's just good for the city, it's good service for the citizens that live here and for the people who come here and visit, so, again, I know you're working daylight to dark, but you did a fantastic job.
Thank you, Mr. Grisher, appreciate it.
All right, so at this time I will entertain a motion for approval of staffing changes to the recreational department.
I shall move, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any further comments or discussion from the Commission? Is there any further comments from?
Staff recommendations, or staff's recommendations for approval, Mr. Mayor.
All right, would City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Next, Resolution 2015-42, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Resolution 2015-42, a resolution of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the fiscal year 2016 budget by increasing general fund expenditures in the amount of $30,400 for recreation center staffing and providing for an effective date. That was reading Resolution 2015-42 by title only.
At this time I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to pass Resolution 2015-42.
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion and a second, Mr. City Manager, is there any comments from staff?
No, what you're doing is approving the expenditure for what we just discussed.
Exactly. Is there any further comments? Would City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe? Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Next, I will entertain a motion for authorization of pay plan amendments pursuant to Resolution 2015-42. And, Mr. City Manager, if you'd like to go ahead and give a little brief update on that, it just follows up with resolution.
Exactly.
Right.
This is not required by your charter, but when I hired Mr. Tenali, we started adding this, I believe, to the budget, so in a roundabout way that you approve it, obviously, I can hire and handle what I need to do with the personnel as I see fit, but it's good for the board to know where their positions are and who's working where, and so I don't control that as maybe tightly as I could or should, and so that's why it's included for your approval tonight.
And actually, Mr. City Manager, shows true transparency, so thank you. You bet. So do I have a motion?
I'm going to authorize the play plan amendments pursuant to Resolution 2015-42, Mr. Mayor.
43, wasn't it 43?
42, 42. Do I have a second?
I think I might've lost time.
I have a head cold, Pat, so hey, come on.
Okay, second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any further comment? Would City Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe? Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
All right, next, before I entertain a motion, Mr. City Manager, would you give us a little update on this approval of staffing changes to Planning and Zoning Department before I entertain the motion?
Yeah, as you well know, I made a change within our Planning and Zoning Department. It was a difficult change to make, it always is, it's probably the most unattractive part of my job, one that created some sleepless nights and some loss of weight, but I think it needed to happen, and so, I'm serious, I mean, when you have to do what I had to do, I mean, it's nauseating, and you changed somebody's life forever, and so, as we all know, Lynn Rosetti's no longer with the organization, but with the amount of workload that we've got, I felt that it was time to make a change, and so I want to create an interim period that I can study exactly the workload based off of what we're about to receive, and I think we all know what we're talking about, we've got two major developments that are on the cusp of at least becoming the light of day to both the Plan Commission and the Board of Commissioners. So what I'd like to do is study this and see what the workload's gonna be and work with a consultant and a current employee, just over the next basically two months to see what we're really gonna need, do I need to hire a director, and you guys know how I am about hiring, I'm very skittish about that, I don't want to offer the department head salaries that we offer to just somebody off the street without having any experience with them. So with that, I asked for a proposal from Duell &amp; Associates, that's Al Carrier's company, who we do work with all the time, to just float me 60 days, literally keep me afloat, everybody knows Marcy by now, Marcy Forbes, she's gonna be our superintendent for the Boca Sierra Road Project, and she's gonna keep office hours, Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, from 8:00 in the morning until noon. Our two employees out front, Patty Cordes and Gwen Sinkfield, are gonna be trained in what I want to call Planning and Zoning 101, so they'll be able to handle a certain level of question, and if it's handled, great, and if not, if this is, if I'm going and it's over my head, I say, I'm sorry, but the director will be here on Wednesday morning from 8:00 to noon, I can make you an appointment, and that's how we're gonna handle it, just for 60 days. With that, part of Duell &amp; Associates' proposal didn't include any secretarial or assistant-type help, this is formulating the Plan Commission packets, taking the phone calls, correlating everything, and it's, I've seen what it is, and it's an awful job, and everyone knows, Cheryl in my office has a previous experience when she worked in the City of Seminole, and frankly, for the City of Madeira Beach in the Building Department, and understands that very well, so very much against her will, I've asked her to be the interim assistant for Marcy just for 60 days, and because of the amount of hours and workload that she has to put in, I'm asking that her pay be adjusted by $4 an hour. That's just for 60 days, when the 60 days expire, obviously, I'm gonna have to come to you in March, so it's not gonna be exactly 60 days, it'll probably bring us into March. I'll have a recommendation as to whether or not I'm gonna be more comfortable keeping the department contracted out on a permanent basis, or if I'm gonna be forced to hire somebody.
All right, thank you, Mr. City Manager, at this time I will entertain a motion for approval of staffing changes to the Planning and Zoning Department.
I shall move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and, Mr. Finance Director, right now are we still on track with what we budgeted for revenue coming into the Building Department?
Yeah, at this point, we haven't, we have not made any changes to the revenue assumptions at this point.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further comments or questions from the Commission? Is there any further comments?
Mr. Mayor, the only thing that I would like to add is that, you know, Ms. Rosetti did, I think, a valiant job doing what she was hired to do, I think what was now being pitched in Madeira Beach was just a little too much for one person to handle, and so I really think that this consultant way, this contracting out, is gonna be the way that we're gonna be forced into it. I did create a situation where Ms. Rosetti landed on her feet, and she wasn't just escorted out without any pay, and that's how we've handled all of our people in the past, and that's how this was handled as well, and so she was gracious, and she got a letter of recommendation, and everyone was friends at the end of the day.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, you've always proven to be a class boss. Thank you. Mr. Everett?
I'm Jim Everett, I'm chairman of the Planning Board, I just wanted to indicate that I have had the opportunity to interact with Marcy some on projects, incredibly knowledgeable, and I'm very comfortable with her as a support person for us, particularly in light of what we all know are coming down the pipe, so just wanted to make that comment. I have had the chance to meet her and sit with her a few meetings, and she's done an outstanding job from what I've seen thus far, so just wanted to add that for you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Everett. Is there any other comments? And I'd also like to say, I've had the chance to sit with Marcy and ask her some questions on some projects, she seems to be on the ball, she's always there with the answer to the question, so.
Very knowledgeable, go.
Exactly. Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe? Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
All right. Next, I want to entertain a motion for approval of Duell &amp; Associates' site plan review, miscellaneous planning services, and personal proposals, excuse me.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm with you tonight, Pat, sorry.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any comments from staff, Mr. City Manager?
No, Mr. Mayor. The City Manager's recommendation is for approval.
Is there any comments or questions from the Commission? Is there any further comments? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Poe? Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
Next, I want to entertain a motion for approval of personal interim pay.
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. City Managers, any comments from staff?
No, Mr. Mayor. The only thing that I'd ask is that either the minutes reflect or the motion include the fact that, and I think most of you are aware, Ms. Rhodey's been actually doing this for about ninety days due to an extended leave in that department. So she's been doing it for quite some time. I would just ask that it begin with the current, Vince, whatever current pay period that we're in, I think is probably the way to, it could start in this current pay period, is all I'm asking.
Mr. City Attorney, would the motion have to be amended to show that? Okay.
I'll amend my motion to reflect that, Mr. Mayor. The pay starts on this paper.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any comments from the-
Commission?
Is there any further comments? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe? Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, resolution two thousand fifteen dash forty-three. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, resolution two thousand fifteen dash forty-three, a resolution of the city of Madera Beach, Florida, mending the fiscal year 2016 budget by increasing general fund and building fund expenditures in the total amount of seventy-seven thousand two hundred dollars for planning and zoning services and providing for an effective date. That was reading resolution two thousand fifteen dash forty-three by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain the motion.
I'll make the motion to pass resolution two zero one five dash four three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. And Mr. City Manager, is there any comments from staff?
Staff recommendations for approval.
All right. And I believe the Finance Director answered my questions earlier. So we're on track where we originally said we were at from the budget.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Is there any comments or questions from the Commission? Is there any further comments? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Next, resolution two thousand fifteen dash forty-four. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, resolution two thousand fifteen dash forty-four, resolution of the city of Madera Beach, Florida, mending the fiscal year 2016 budget by increasing general fund expenditures in the total amount of forty thousand four hundred dollars for public works position and providing for an effective date. That was reading resolution two thousand fifteen dash forty-four by title only.
And at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that twenty fifteen dash forty-four resolution be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. City Manager, is there any comments from staff?
Mr. Mayor, I defer to Finance Director Tenalia on this one.
The information on this is included in the packets. This is a personnel classification that was made effective October first, and that classification was represented a substantial increase from the budgeted dollar amount for that position. The total cost impact of that change is forty thousand four hundred dollars.
Commissioners, any questions from Finance Director? Is there any further comments? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
All right. Item number five, discussion from Assistant City Manager, Finance Director. Before I entertain a motion, Vince, would you like to go ahead and open this up?
Yeah, if you don't mind, just one second.
I think, Mr. Mayor, a prelude to this is that we do have a fire engine in the budget. And the conversation that Mr. Tenalia wants to have tonight are some alternatives in paying for it versus using cash. And so with that, it's not a new item. It's in the budget. It's just how you want to go about to pay for it.
Yeah, and really, this is just continuing previous discussions that we had over the course of the past six to eight months regarding long-term financial planning. In September, we approved new policies relating to fund balance and investments. And at that time, we decided we would move forward in the future with new policies regarding rates and debt policies. So tonight, what I wanted to just briefly discuss was, as the City Manager alluded to, how best to finance the fire engine that's included in the budget. We have a six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar budget item for that fire engine this year. The estimates for that apparatus are now looking closer to seven-hundred thousand dollars. The budgeted scenario assumes that we would pay for it in cash, and that option is certainly available to us. However, I'm suggesting that there might be a better route to go. And those options would potentially include leasing it or proceeding with another bank loan, another debt issue. Obviously, there are implications of each of those options. There are consequences. There are advantages. There are disadvantages. Some considerations that I think we ought to be discussing would include the nature of the city's flexibility. I would say, over the past three and a half to four years, probably my, the most clear observation I have is that the city has done well because of its flexibility. You know, we've made operational changes. We've amended the budget. We've had the luxury of having a substantial cash position that allowed us to make those changes. So if the city desires to continue with that flexibility, we do need to take some actions to ensure our long-term position. For this specific vehicle, we have a, this is a very, this is about as clear of a public-purpose type of project that exists. Buying a fire engine is certainly, you know, probably represents one of the number-one reasons why a local government exists in the first place. So the nature of the financing is certainly leads us to a tax-exempt borrowing situation. We have a potential revenue source with the Penny for Pinellas that exists entirely for the purpose of financing public safety vehicles. At the moment, the current installment of the Penny for Pinellas expires in December of 2019, 2019, that is. My recommendation is that we consider taking advantage of the remaining three and a half years on that installment and take a look at what the advantages are in financing against that future revenue. Couple other considerations with this fund. We have two other major projects tentatively scheduled out of the Local Option Sales Tax Fund. One is the Madera Way Improvements Project, and the other is this City Hall, City Center docks peer project. I think both of those, I think City Manager would agree, are in a very tentative stage at this point. We've discussed the option of them even being, you know, some type of public-private partnership type of opportunities. But, you know, at the very least, we do have the seed money available in the budget for each of those projects. I guess what I'm saying is that of the three, the fire engine certainly represents the one which would most closely line up with a tax-exempt borrowing situation. You know, another consideration we would, of course, have to make is whether this adds to the city's debt burden. If we were to pursue, whether it was a lease option or a loan option, those are essentially the same in terms of their actual impacts financially on the city. This would be our fourth debt issue in the past three and a half to four years. Prior to that, the city had issued no debt for something like thirty to forty years. And in that regard, one thing I would offer is that each of the previous three financings have taken place with their own specific pledge revenue. We are certainly not pledging the same types of general fund revenues. To this point, we have pledged, on the City Center project, we've pledged a collection of general fund revenues. On the utility undergrounding project, we've pledged the Gulf Boulevard utility undergrounding revenue. And on the Stormwater project, we pledged stormwater fund revenue. On this one, if we were to consider moving forward with a potential debt issue, we would be pledging Penny for Pinellas revenues. So if you think of each of those funds as almost separate entities within the city organization, it would not be adding to our total debt burden in terms of general fund liabilities. So my recommendation is that we, at the very least, issue a request for proposals. Again, the budget scenario assumes that we pay this with cash. So in my mind, the advantages have to clearly outweigh the default scenario, which is to fund it with cash. But I would, but I would like to see those rates, although interest rates have gone up over the last two weeks. We're still at absolute historic lows in terms of the past fifty, sixty years. Actually, ever. I mean, we're still at, we're still at historic lows, ever. So the opportunity for a low rate and the opportunity to use the remaining pledge revenues on this installment of the Penny for Pinellas revenue, and the opportunity, more importantly, to set ourselves up for future projects, whether it's Madera Way or City Center. You know, we seem to talk quite a bit about big projects, and I would hate for us to fund this vehicle with cash and then find ourselves struggling over the next two, three, four years to come up with the funding opportunity to pursue those projects. So ultimately, if you follow my line of thinking, I know this is the first time I've brought it to you, and I'm trying to address a lot in a short period of time here, but if you support the concept of what I'm presenting, ultimately, what I'm asking for is direction to release an RFP for loan and lease options. And then, of course, I would come back to you and present the results of those, the results of that RFP process. And ultimately, we would, of course, have the option to reject any or all of those proposals and buy the apparatus with cash, or not buy it all. All of those options remain on the table to you. But in my mind, if we don't release the RFP, then we don't have the option. So I will leave it at that for now.
Thank you, Finance Director. And I believe the key word you said there was flexibility in, with the grants out there, having to match some of the grants out there to have that cash flow, to be able to move forward, is a good idea. So thank you very much. Commissioners, does anybody have any questions for the Finance Director or City Manager?
And you're going to pledge the Penny for Pinellas, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and I should mention that it would be my intent that we would pledge only the Local Option Sales Tax Penny for Pinellas revenues. If for whatever, the banks would come back and we would find that that is not a sufficient credit, if, for example, they would need to have an additional lien on general fund revenues, then in my mind, at that point, we just proceed with cash, and we don't consider that option.
Get it over with, okay. Thanks, Seth.
And what the Finance Director and City Manager is looking for is just consensus to move forward and come back to the Commission on this.
The consensus that we're looking for tonight is just a thumbs up to issue the RFP and see what the results are.
Okay. Is there any further comment?
I got a couple of questions. The price increase from six-fifty to seven, was that because of just time of buying it from when we put the six-fifty into the budget? Or was that for extra equipment that was added to the-
The Fire Chief could probably address that better than I could.
Do you mind coming up for a second, Chief? Can you give us just a quick detail of the actual truck itself?
Just an overview of the apparatus itself?
Is it a ladder truck?
Yes, sir. It's a seventy-eight-foot ladder truck, single axle.
Because of the high rises that are up and down the beaches?
Not only the high rises, but just the single-family homes. I mean, we're looking, we can't build on the first floor, so everything is two stories and higher out here.
So it adds protection to the citizens of Madera Beach, plus some of the-
Absolutely, absolutely. Right now, we're having to rely on Seminole's ladder truck. If something happens to the bridge, or the bridge happens to be up, then that's going to be a severe delay on us, on our initial response.
Were we anticipating any extra revenues from hiring or buying this truck? Are we just, are we anticipating any-
Maybe I can jump in on that one. We all are aware of the contract that we share for coverage in Seminole. I'm sorry, in the Reddingtons with Seminole. Because of the size of the buildings in the Reddingtons, in order to qualify for when that contract expires, to maybe, maybe assume the entire contract, which would be a huge revenue generator, we would have to have this piece of equipment. So what we're doing is planning for the possibility. Not only, we need it in town.
And I agree.
That's period. But this also provides us flexibility in the future with that contract as well.
I'm just saying, if that does happen, I would like to see that revenue encumbered for the payment of the vehicle. That's all I'm saying.
You could certainly make that decision at that time. Absolutely.
That's all I'm saying. Thanks. Thanks, Chief.
Uh, Chief, sorry. And just want to bring up one more time. And, unless you're aware of the fire that happened down at the hut. And actually, I was on scene that night, and our lieutenant was there that night, and I believe the response time of the ladder truck was somewhere around fifteen minutes. And it was actually Pinellas Suncoast that evening. So, I mean, Chief, you brought up a good point, and I know I've been over there at a station when y'all have been discussing this. So the way FEMA rules are, it is, they're actually three-story homes now, because the first floor starts at, what, fourteen feet elevation. So, you know, it's a good idea. I know it's an additional, I think, one-hundred-and-fifty, one-hundred-thousand dollars for that vehicle, but in the long run, I think it's going to be good. And hopefully, soon, we can bring to the Commission. I know it's actually public record, what we're discussing with the Reddingtons also right now with maybe an additional station. So there might be some additional revenue coming in, so.
And I'm probably putting the cart before the horse. I know you're just asking to put out RFPs. I'm totally okay with that. You know, the more information we can get, the better. I just needed to make a little more detail of what we were trying to buy and why we were buying it. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Chief O'Neill, thank you. Andy, thank you very much for being here this evening, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I think the final thought of the night on this one is, is that you're looking for financial flexibility, but you're also creating yourself flexibility with future contracts, contracts based off of the equipment that you're going to purchase.
And I think you have a consensus, Commissioner Lister, from the rest of the Commission, what you're thinking or discussing to go into that, so.
I'm going to go for it. Find out much information as it goes.
Mr. City Manager, you have consensus from the Commission, and for you and the Finance Director to do that.
I was just going to try to clarify one last point. Sorry. I don't think, I don't know if I was clear enough. On the current installment of the Penny for Pinellas, it expires in December of 2019. And that is the, that represents the term of what the, that represents the term of the loan. So the way we would try to structure it is that this is going to, this is going to mature in less than four years. This is not some long-term liability. So that would be the plan at this point.
Thank you, Vince. All right. I guess next is the performance evaluation for MJ and Emma. All right. All right. Sorry. Sorry, Shane. I couldn't resist, man. I love your dogs, but I trip on them all day when I'm here. The annual performance evaluation, Commissioners, does anybody want to open up with any discussion or say some nice things about our City Manager?
I'm probably going to repeat myself over and over, but really, the city's never been in better shape. And it's not just because of Crawford, but it is a large part because of Crawford and the staff that he hires. So again, the recommendations that I, and you know, perfect's a tough word, but I've given him a five across the board for two years in a row, and he just hasn't disappointed me. I thought, you know, if you give somebody no place to go, other than, you know, up, it could be difficult. But he seems to just keep raising that bar. So my recommendation was to increase his salary to a base of one-fifty, Mr. Mayor. And again, his evaluation on my part was very, very good. Actually, it was perfect. I hate to use that word, but I-
Well, I have to agree with you.
And again, I know it's because a lot of the staff. And so I'm giving credit where credit's due. The kid's good, but their staff is good, too.
Yep. And you know, when you're, when you have a ship out there, you've got to have a good captain on it. We have an excellent captain on our ship in Madera Beach. All you have to do is look around the county, and they'll tell you anywhere you go. And I'm sure you see that constantly. I don't get around like I used to, but I'll tell you. You're always wearing for somebody's going to sneak up the back, up the back way and snatch him away. But he's pretty, he's pretty solid in Madera Beach, I think. He likes our area, and he likes Madera Beach. He's just a great asset to the county, not only to Madera Beach, but an asset as a young man within the county. So I go for your deal, Terry.
I'd just like to make the remark that, I think I've made or told you before, Shane, that whenever I get company in from my estate or out of town, I bring them here. This is the first place we come. I got to show them the city center. I take them through the whole area. And then from there, we go to Archibald, and then we go to the Memorial, nine eleven, then we go down to Jones Pass. But I am so proud of the city and the way it looks. And I'm so anxious to show people all the time when they come in. And of course, the credit goes to Shane, our City Manager, Mr. Crawford. And again, I did the same thing Terry did. I gave him a perfect score. And I do feel the one-hundred-and-fifty is well worth it. Thanks, Shane. You've done a great job.
And I might mention that the citizens of this town hasn't seen anything yet. But we keep rolling, let me tell you. And that's the answer to progress, is when you have Commissioners that work with their City Manager. There's no stopping. Everybody works together. I only saw that ever once before in the city of Madera Beach, ever. That was when Ralph Rossen was the City Manager. There's probably people out here remembering him. And he had a commission like that. And that's when we did all the dumb things that started over here, that Shane's dropped in and made something early in the twenty-first century. But we were rolling along as best we could. It's been a great ride. It's been wonderful. Thank you, Shane.
Well, Shane, you know, I gave you horrible marks. I think you dress funny, and I think you smell. But, you know, actually, Mr. Crawford, you've done a fantastic job. And I always look at it, I say the same thing when I go around the county. Somebody says, well, you're doing a great job. I says, no, it's teamwork. I says, no, it's teamwork, and you've got to have great staff. And I'm telling you what, Mr. Crawford, you have surrounded yourself by great staff, and that's great leadership. So congratulations. I totally agree with the Commission on what they're looking at doing here for you, and congratulations. And I did me my comments on MJ and Emma, sorry. Hopefully, forgive me, and maybe I can bench press my way out of this one, too.
Unlikely.
Huh?
Unlikely.
Unlikely. Thank you, Doc. And now, this time, I'm going to open up the floor, so anybody wants to come up and say some nice things about MJ and Emma, y'all come up.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and Shane Crawford, my name is Robert Shaw. I live at 507-129th Avenue in Madeira Beach. I've always, I've always thought, and I've dealt with this problem, that when you review somebody, you look at the past, you look at the present, and you try and take a peek into the future. And as to our past, before Shane got here, it's no secret, we were the laughingstock of the county. Commission meetings were better than some comedy clubs. We were near fistfights. We had mayors quit and walk out in the middle of meetings, commissioners leave in the middle of the meetings. We had a City Manager quit. We rehired him, we fired him, rehired him, and this was constantly going on. The infrastructure was falling apart. The planning was very poor at the time. We weren't looking to the future at all. And we needed a new City Manager. And with the wisdom that the Board demonstrated when they hired Shane Crawford, who was an unknown commodity, they did a wonderful thing for this community. Shane had a rather thin resume at the time. He was younger, and how do you build a resume until you have some experience? So he came to us, and I don't want to say at rock-bottom price, but at bottom, at near-bottom price, because he didn't have enough to present you to really fulfill the salary I feel we should have been paying him. I think he's proven himself. If you look at the present, we've got a recreation organization that is operating full bore. We've got a new city hall, we've got a new fire department, we've got contractors coming and putting up new buildings, we've got infrastructure repairs of streets, the planning is done for the sewers. And I think that we're looking at a city now that is on the move, and there's one unfortunate element to it. And that is that when a City Manager is doing so well, and he's doing it, I understand with the cooperation of this Board, it's not a one-man effort, and with the people that work behind him. But when you do this, you're going to get noticed by other cities around the state, around the county, and cities who might need a manager, bigger cities that have bigger budgets, are going to come in and try and steal them away from you. So I think it behooves you to pay him as much as the city can afford for the job he's done. You look at the future, and I know that Shane sees Madeira Beach as I do, and that is as a potential crown jewel in that chain of islands that surrounds Pinellas County. And I think we're getting near taking our place as that jewel. And I think in closing, to try and illustrate my point, I want to share a little story with you that I've always loved. And that is a wealthy businessman from the city. He'd been very successful, he was very frugal, and he had a string of horses that he kept in a stable out in the country. So he's taking a drive one day out to the stable to visit the horses, and he saw a farmer standing by his fence, and a sign next to him that said, "Oats for sale." And he told his chauffeur to stop, and he walked over, and he thought, well, this farmer, I can take advantage of him. He said, "Look, you got oats for sale, right?" And the farmer, "Yep, sure do." He said, "Well, I'm looking for a rock-bottom price. Look, we can cut the middleman out, I'll buy direct, I got all these horses, maybe we can do business. Why don't you give me your price?" And the farmer said, "Well, actually, I have two prices." So you got a price for fresh, clean oats, and I got a special price for those that have been run through the horse one time." And I think too often, Madeira Beach has had people in Shane's position who have been oats that were run through the horse one time. And I think Shane represents the fresh, clean oats that the city needs. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
Thanks.
Doc?
Most of you here know me, I'm Dr. Heidi Goldberg, and I don't live in Madeira, but I've lived here for 28 years, and I can tell you that Shane has put Madeira Beach on the map. This city, no one even knew about, it was a sleepy little town, and Shane has made this place, the Marina, the Marriott, and now we've got all these things coming up on the beach. And you're never going to find a better guy who's more dedicated, who has done an amazing job, and now his stomach is all fixed so he can work as much as you want him to. And Travis is the one that recruited him, that I know, and that was perfect, Travis. And I say that he should get an extra zero onto his salary, because I've seen this guy work like a dog, night and day. He always says to me, "I got doctor hours, okay?" So he deserves whatever he gets, because he has done an amazing job here. Everybody that you meet, they tell you, "Look at Madeira Beach." When they come to my office, I say, "Did you see that condo going up? Did you see that hotel going up?" And I see a lot of patients, and everybody is so impressed with what has, the changes that have been made here in Madeira Beach in the last three to four years. And you guys are putting yourself on the map. And when I got here, all this stuff was all empty and old shacks, and you drive down Gulf Boulevard now, everything is new, everything is fresh. And look at this place. Who even has that? I didn't even know City Managers existed. You ask me who the City Manager is in any other Seminole, I had no idea there even is a City Manager. I've never seen a commission like this. You guys run this like we run our medical board. And I was like sitting here so proud of that whole list and how you went through it, and how he talked about the finances. This is all the same thing that we do, actually, at the medical level. And I really am impressed with how you guys are running the city. So you got my vote, and Shane's got it 10 times over. I love him.
And Doc, I'm for the $1.50 raise, the 150, yes. Another zero. In a small story, and I'm.
He works really hard.
Thanks, Doc. And I'm sure some of y'all, when Mr. Crawford, we were sitting there recruiting him and kind of, you know, giving him the candy treatment, I know it was a minus 30-degree day up there where you were from in Wisconsin. And I said, "Mr. Crawford, come on down, put him on the boat." I think it was 84 degrees here. We went on the boat with a 12-pack of beer, took him right offshore, about a mile, turned the boat back to Madeira Beach, and I said, "Brother, all this can be yours."
That's how you got impressed, that 12-pack.
Yeah, it was the 12-pack. It wasn't the 85 degrees and was minus 30 in Wisconsin, nothing to do with that.
That was the case.
Larry, how are you doing this evening, sir?
My name's Larry Butterfield, and I have a store at Johns Pass on the boardwalk. October 25th was eight years for me, and I just want to say the fact that how much this city has grown in the last eight years. Mayor Travis, you've done an outstanding job. You've regrouped the City Commissioners, I think, to work together beyond whatever we could ever do. I can't say anything better than what these last, just said, the last two people have talked. I can't praise this city enough. Like I said, just look around you, what do you see? My store is above the Marina downstairs, and I am taking with a lot of fishermen who don't like the things because of the fact that the drug problem's being solved here. I love it. There's families coming here. You've changed things so much. The walkways, you put the, with the, it's so friendly for people to park and cross the street to Johns Pass, all through the whole city. There's so many improvements coming here, so many remodeling jobs doing job. And I've talked with Shane many times, and there's times I've called him, "Hey, 7:00, let me say we had a beer or something." "Larry, I'm still working." I mean, it's amazing, the hours he's put in, you did a great job hiring him, the city staff, I appreciate everything you guys have done. All I can say is keep up the great work, and Madeira Beach is on the move, and we have been on the map, and it's just been great living and working here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. And once again, it's a group thing, and I think the Commission is outstanding. The Commission makes it to where the City Manager can get things done. And the City Manager, your staff, is outstanding and gets things done, but it only happens because the residents of this city, the business owners, help us to where it all works.
And yeah, give him whatever he wants in a raise, deserves it.
Like I said, I'm in for the $1.50, brother.
I have my scope ready.
Oh, yeah, I know, the 29th, I'm ready.
Good evening. My name's Jim Everett, 15458 First Street East. I serve as Chairman of the Planning Board, and I also serve as Chairman of the Board of Directors for the Treasure Island, Madeira Beach Chamber of Commerce. And I was glad to hear Larry talk as a business owner, because that's one thing, typically when you're reviewing somebody here in the political arena, you're not thinking about the impact that it's having economically. And this center, this city center, and the economic impact that it's having, I talked to several business owners who are members of the Chamber from events that were hosted here, the amount of business that they enjoyed coming out of the people that attended these events out here was phenomenal. So I think, I think we don't want to overlook the impact on the businesses. As Director of the Chamber, I wanted to mention that. I served with Shane on the Board, which is something I wanted to also mention. He does activities outside of his role as City Manager. As busy as he is, he still makes the Chamber Board meetings on a regular basis. He contributes, and he is absolutely an important and integral part to the Chamber's operations. So just the fact that he takes the time to contribute that to the business owners is amazing. The other thing I'll mention is, I've been here for 10 years, so I was here when we were in the paper every week, and it was embarrassing, quite honestly. And I'm a businessman and have been for 35 years, and people are going, "What in the heck is going on in Madeira Beach?" Well, now people are going, "What in the heck is going on in Madeira Beach?", and it's a good thing. And they're wanting to know, how in the world are you guys getting done what you're getting done? The development, the growth, the excitement, the people that are coming in there, it's incredible. And it started with the Commission, and then the Commission made a very, very smart hiring decision and brought a CEO in here to run the city from an operational level, and the guy's done a phenomenal job. So I would encourage you to give him the max. And to points that were made earlier, he's going to be a commodity in demand as we continue to do what we do. So let's hang on to him as long as we can. I'll be the first one to shoot him when he tries to get out of town. I'm sure I'll have plenty of help. But a phenomenal job, and I worked with him quite a bit on the Planning Board and in the Chamber, and just absolutely, the amount of work the guy does is unbelievable. I mean, I get stuff from him at 7:00 in the morning and 10:00 at night. I mean, he works all the time. So if you broke down what he makes per hour, he'd probably go get a job over here at the Winn-Dixie, because he'd make more money per hour than he does as City Manager, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Everett. And thank you very much for your work with our Planning Commission and your service to our community. Good evening, Hooch, how are you doing? Long time no see, sir.
What's up with that? My name is Hooch Kovahie, I'm a resident in this town that I'm really, really proud of. Yes, we can look at the past and say how past was, but now we're here, thank to the leadership, thank to you guys, and our City Manager, obviously, and the staff. I'd like to echo what everybody said here, including, you know, yourselves as the leaders, and including the folks that expressed their opinion. I'd also like to say, if we were to fill this room with residents of this town, I'm sure everyone would say the same thing as we are. We're extremely, as a citizen of this town, really appreciative of what you're doing as a leaders, mayor, council, City Manager, and we just couldn't ask for better. Now, you all know I work in a world of civil engineering, which means I deal with a lot of cities and towns and commissions and things of that nature. And the best way I can describe you all is to compare you, really, with some of the other cities. And I have to say that this is, I would say, one of the best. I really could say it's one of the best. Yes, we have a couple of other good cities in this very Pinellas County, but when it comes to a well-run city, a place where all the residents are happy, you know, there's no other city that can come to my mind but Madeira Beach. So I'd like to say thank you to you folks, really, you're doing a wonderful job. Shane, you're doing a wonderful job. We're very, very thankful of everything you're doing. And, you know, money is important, but I think no one can buy him because he loves us. He's not going anywhere.
We love him.
Yes. So have a, keep up a good job, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Hooch. And Doc, I'm not worried about it, because you don't travel. Would anybody else like to make a comment? All right, and Shane, I'm about to close. Once again, you've done a great job. Like I said, I was, we were, I'd say honored to have the Torres Development Council here, and sitting there watching two mayors of the two largest cities in Pinellas County drop a jaw when they walked in this place, that's a good feeling. And we've done a great job here, and thank you very much to the residents, to the Commission, and Mr. State Manager, you and your staff, you've done an outstanding job. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I just, you know, I'm not much of a talker, but, you know, four years ago, the community embraced a 34-year-old City Manager, and that's not heard of very often. It's a young, tender age. I've been doing this since I was 19, but it was a big move, especially switching states. But I can tell you this, between the community embracement, and then, I have to say this, and I'm not just blowing smoke, you guys have made this the easiest job I've ever had. I mean, the cohesiveness that this Board has versus what we were is night and day different. And you make my job easy. I've done, I think, if I can pat myself on the back, the best thing I've done is surround myself with a team that's second to none. And my department heads and my staff from A to Z make this thing tick. It's not me, it's them. So I very much appreciate it. I have said, and I'll go on record to say, I'm here for the long haul. If there was no salary adjustment tonight, or if there is, I'm in it for the long haul. I think we've got a lot of things coming down the pike that it's going to take some, it's going to take a lot more hard work. We've got some major developments that need to be done and done right. They need to fit Madeira Beach, and there are going to be large developments. Couple that with the fact that we just built the city center, and now I want to enjoy it a little bit, man. I mean, we've got some fun things that we can get done here, and you've seen tonight that there's new ideas being brought up, we're changing staffing at the Rec Center, we're doing something different with the Fitness Center. I mean, this thing is going to continuously evolve. The days here go fast. You know, I've had jobs where you dread going in, because an eight-hour day feels like a 16-hour day. Coming to work here, it comes and goes pretty quick. So with that, I'm humbled by the comments by both the Commission and the audience. I graciously accept whatever my salary adjustment is, if there is one, and I'm here for years to come, as long as you want me to keep coming to work every Monday, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. State Manager. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to give you a $1.50 extra a month. I retract that.
I still move, Mr. Mayor.
I'm trying. Give me a break, Doc, okay? No, at this time, I'll.
Can I just jump in here, Mayor, just to make it a little bit easier, so we don't have to come back to you again?
Okay.
We need to draft a Fifth Amendment to his employment contract. The first four have already been approved. The Fifth Amendment would just revise the salary provision, if that's what you'd like to do.
Okay.
So maybe the motion can authorize me to prepare that Fifth Amendment to change the salary to whatever dollar amount that you're coming to, so that we don't need to bring the contract back to you at the next meeting. I can just go ahead and make that amendment and provide it to the mayor for signature, if that could be included. We could save the step. And the only other thing that I would ask for you is, when I draft this, I need a start date, as to what pay period we're going to start it at.
I would defer to Vince, but I know my anniversary date is January 17th. In fact, that was the big joke. You all started me on Martin Luther King Day. I came to work and no one was here, and that was real funny. But if it's easier, Vince, to start me the pay period after that, or whatever makes sense from a payroll standpoint, Mr. Mayor, I'm comfortable with whatever.
Mr. Finance Director?
Yeah, we'll just base everything off of his anniversary date, like we've done in the past.
the past. I think...
I think that's consistent with what we've done in the past, is January seventeenth.
So I'll make a motion to amend the employment agreement with the city manager of Madeira Beach to reflect a salary, base salary of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
A second, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further comments from the commission? And Mr. Crawford, once again, thank you very much. You've done an outstanding job.
I appreciate it and thank you to everyone.
Is there any further comment? Would State Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
All right. Next reports and correspondence. The only thing I'd like to report, of course, we've talked about it already, the city of Madeira Beach hosted the TDC meeting and that was, once again, outstanding to have three mayors, our county commissioner here, John Maroney, and it was an outstanding meeting. As a matter of fact, the Visit St. Pete Clearwater Board enjoyed this place so much, they actually had their Christmas party down at the rec center. So, you know, we're making a big splash. We are forest tourism. The county is selling Madeira Beach and that's what it's about. We're getting our fair share of marketing dollars coming in from bed tax dollars. So it's a good thing. It's, Commissioner Lister, I know that's one of your things and I go out there and pound the streets on that one. Also, I'd like to bring out, and Commissioner Lister, just kinda towards you and the citizens of Madeira Beach, the county is doing a charter review to redo the county's charter. And one of the things, there's some things out there that are questionable and you might wanna look into, but I bring this up to you, Commissioner Lister, since I believe you're gonna be the incoming president for the League of Cities. One of the things that bothers me is that they're trying to do is eliminate the smaller municipalities in Pinellas County. And I think they've tried to do this before. The, this year, I'm the president of the mayor's council for Pinellas County. The twenty-four mayors of this county are about to get together and start hitting these meetings hard because it's something that can't be done, or shouldn't be done. So I kind of wanna bring it to the League of Cities' attention. If y'all could get involved with this, I don't know if it'd be one of those issues you would.
Sure.
Thank you very much. So that's, once again, and I know Commissioner Shuntz, you've seen this again, I don't know if it's the county just wants all the beach's revenue...
That's right.
But I don't think we should lose our individuality, or Madeira Beach.
Absolutely.
Is, that's all from me. Is there anything else from any other commissioner? Okay. Mr. City Attorney?
I don't have anything to add tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Anything from MJ, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just quickly, 'cause I know the city clerk's got a hockey game to get to, but we did have a serious outage yesterday. I just wanna bring that to light because there's been a lot of rumors that something as simple as a power outage could go viral. We were not able to hold the plan commission meeting last night. So an issue already surrounded with drama got even got more dramatic when the city canceled the meeting. Well, you saw what it was like tonight, there was no lights. Imagine that with no air conditioning in the room full of a hundred and fifty people and no ability to present for the presentation. So we canceled that. So basically, everything, the Holton Development is just kinda pushed into the month of January. So January eleventh will be the plan commission meeting. I'm asking all of you not to attend. You can't attend frankly because of the quasi-judicial relationship there. And then if a recommendation is made, and the operative word there is "if," you can take it up on your agenda. It will be on your agenda for Tuesday. If it's not made, you will not take it up on Tuesday. I think that that's the misperception that the public is having because Crawford's putting it on the agenda already for Tuesday. Just because it's on the agenda does not mean that you have to make a motion to approve it. And so a lot of people think that this is cooked up, that this deal is done. And I'm telling you, you guys know, Terry and the mayor especially, the Marriott took, what, three, four years? Barefoot Beach took eight months. This is gonna take some time. We are not going to approve this in the months of January and February. It's just not going to happen. This is too big of a development. That being said, I don't think you should stall either. Let's just continue the meetings. Let's, the developer and the community always meet in the middle. It's gonna happen this time too. So I just wanna get that out there because now this power outage looks like old Crawford canceled the meeting on purpose. I wish I had that imagination, I really do. But it's just not the case. You guys are gonna be inundated with what I've at least seen as a very similar email in regards to this Holton Development. And we know we've got another one on the cusp. Have those people come see me. Don't let them spread the rumors and the rhetoric any further than it already has because ninety percent of it is incorrect. They don't understand that, that John Q. Public doesn't understand that we have to go through this process and give him the zoning before he even starts spending money. If you ask Jim Holton, or Shane Crawford, or Travis Palladino, or the man in the moon, what that development's gonna look like, no one has an answer. He doesn't have an architect. He hasn't, I guess, I take that back. He has an architect that can print out pretty pictures of what a conceptual project will look like. There's nothing in stone. This is the process to polish that, to mold that ball of clay. You've heard me use that lame analogy over and over again. So when you get those upset constituents, throw them my way. Don't deal with it. You guys aren't paid for that. I am. Now I'm even more paid for that. Send them my way and I'll take care of it. And we'll handle that because when I sit them down and I spend a half an hour with them, they walk out understanding it. What they fear is what they don't understand. They listen to these rumors and they take it as gospel and it's not the case. So please send them my way. Every email, the reply should be, "Please meet with Shane Crawford or come to the plan commission meeting on January eleventh." That being said, the only other thing I wanted to say, and Mr. Mayor, I should've alluded to it when she was down there, 'cause I always, I always think when I get done with work, I'm gonna go home and exercise or go for a run and I get home and I put my big butt on the couch and watch TV. She did that all while working full-time for us, which is ridiculous. I mean, that's almost unheard of. And she has more education than your city manager, so she's a great asset, she's a wonderful human being and she's a great employee. And I just wanted to say thank you to her one more time.